The work session, I'm not feeling all that well, so I'm gonna take care of the business portion of this meeting. Once the voting agenda concludes, I'll excuse myself. Counselor Smith will lead us in the rest of the meeting. At this time, I will call on Councilmember Harris, who will introduce our guest and lead us in the invocation, followed by the questions.
Most of you probably know that I had another career before this. I was a teacher at Fort McLemone for seventeen years, taught the gifted program there. And at that particular time, I became really good friends with this Pastor Vicki Fox, who is celebrating her thirty-first year now as pastor of the Michigan Church of God by Faith in Hudson City. It's been my pleasure to choose or to invite people in the community to walk the talk, to do the prayer devotional, and I want to say that this Pastor Vicki walks the talk almost more than anyone I know. So Pastor Vicki, would you please lead us in the prayer and the pledge? And by the way, Pastor Vicki is our city manager's wife. So Mr. Fox, one. Pastor Vicki Fox.
Pleasure.
Thank you.
First of all, I wonder about my hands, remember, from the thumb of the Lord. Amen, I always say, count yourself invited because God has always extended the invitation. Father God, in the name of Jesus. Lord, it is a game that we come before you to thank you and to praise you for all things in thy precious name. Lord, we thank you for this day, for we realize this is the day that you have made. Thank you for allowing us to see another day. And if not been for you, Lord, we wouldn't be here. And for that, we want to say thank you. Lord, we ask you to look down on us tonight, one by one, name by name. You know what we stand in need of, God, for you have declared that you are supplied there. We ask you right now, Lord, every soul, upon the sound of our voices, touch right now in the name of Jesus. Oh, God, I ask you to look on this city as the whole, Lord. Oh, God, we know that you're sitting high and you're looking low. And you know the matters that hand, God, and you're God that is able to do all the things with faith. And Lord, before we do anything, we just want to say thank you for your son, Jesus. Oh, God, thank you right now. And I ask you to thank, I thank you because I know that you've got us at your heart and not at your head. So in that same, God, I ask you to move in this meeting and mark us with, in the name of Jesus, every problem, we call it solved. Every situation, we call it straightened out. In the name of Jesus, let it be solved. Thy servant has asked this, and Jesus stays here right now. Amen?
Amen.
Amen. No question to the past. I pray to the heavens, to the body of the United States of America, and to the Republic where which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, will the court please call the roll for the establishment of the quorum?
Counselor for Jenkins?
Yes.
Counselor for Roberts?
Here.
Counselor for Smith?
Present.
Counselor for Harris?
Present.
Mayor Draper?
Uh, here, a quorum is established. Is there a motion to weigh the reading in a few minutes of the February seventh, ready to vote?
So, the second.
Will the court please call the roll?
Counselor for Jenkins?
Yes.
Counselor for Roberts?
Yes.
Counselor for Smith?
Yes.
Counselor for Harris?
Yes.
Mayor Draper?
Yes, those minutes are approved. Mr. Fox, other than the addition of item H to the consent agenda, which would be a resolution authorizing the city to join state and other local governments in current opioid settlements, and then a standalone resolution endorsing RNC letter of intent with UAB, are there any other conditions or releases to the agenda?
Yes, sir.
With that, then, I will move that we adopt the agenda as just amended, is there a second? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Counselor for Jenkins?
Yes.
Counselor for Roberts?
Yes.
Counselor for Smith?
Yes.
Counselor for Harris?
Yes.
Mayor Draper?
Yes, before we begin our voting business tonight, I'd like to call on Coach Haley Long. Coach, if you could come forward to the podium for the presentation of the RRCA Friendly Community Plan. Thank you, Coach.
Thank you. It was last year, I'm also the Woodstock 5K Race Director and member and treasurer of the Aniston Runners Club this year. And last year, looking at RRCA, which is the Runners Club of America, they have a very big award that's presented to just a few cities throughout the United States. And what this award is, Runner Friendly Communities within the United States. When I read what that attributes to, I was like, that's my community. It's not just Aniston Runners Club. It's what the city has been doing to make us a runner-friendly community, a state community, trying to encourage a healthy community. And also, it's not just us. I have to have five recommendation letters. Fast speed for the elite, Coach Samuel Green, who sponsors very young people and won many awards, which I'm sure you're aware of. He wrote a recommendation letter that was from the bottom of his heart, and I could not believe how he felt about this community. And then also, I'd like to recognize Miss Maggie Owens at the YMCA. She's a huge partner with the Aniston Runners Club and this community. She wrote a very nice letter as well, and we couldn't have gotten this award without her. Also, Becky Jones of Dirty Soul Trail Races, she wrote a letter. They're a brand-new trail race association here in Aniston. She's only a year old, and she's brought a lot to this community. And then our own mayor, Jack Draper wrote a letter, and Jackson Hodges. And for them to take the time to do that, it meant a lot. When I got, I got an email saying that we got the award, they said ours was one of the strongest applications they had seen in many years. So I was very honored for that to be held. There were only five communities this fall that were added. We will hold the accreditation for five years. And it was Toledo, Ohio, Lumberton, North Carolina, Greensboro, North Carolina, Fort Thomas, Kentucky, and Aniston, Alabama. So with the due, I'd like to, we will have a plaque at the Aniston Runners Club, but we also have one for the city to display at City Hall. You also will be getting some decals that you can put on windows that we are a runner, RRCA designated community.
Thank you. Good job. Counselor, come on. Hold it here, we may take a picture.
Okay. Can Maggie in the picture?
Absolutely.
She better be. A lot.
Thank you for all you do. Test your cheek.
Do you want to sit now?
What did you just say? Yeah.
Oh, it's fine.
Thank you for everything you do. We appreciate RRCA getting the recognition. We appreciate everything you do, especially with the Woodstock races and all that. It's just a great, it's a great honor and all that we thought about it, that means. And if there's anything we can do, just let us know. Thank you.
Thank you, Coach Long. I've had the privilege of working with Coach Long and Donna Ho. She also coaches the indoor cross-country and outdoor track teams for Donna Ho. She garnered her first day champion just a few weeks ago that I hope will bring before us and acknowledge as well. The first track champion in Donna Ho's history, I think.
In indoor.
In indoor.
Oh, we've had several.
So significant accomplishment. She works very hard. She gives a lot. I see her day in and day out. She gives a lot of her time and energy to the children of our community. So it's more than just this. This is just an extension of what she does each and every day to make our community a better place. So thank you, Coach Long.
Thank you.
Coach Long, I cannot thank you enough because I know that was a lot of work for you to pull all this together, but I'm very indebted to our runners community, running community. I've given the word Woodstock several times. I was terrible, but, but I look at all the unity, that the whole community coming together for help, and that's a huge asset here, and I can't thank you enough, really.
I just want to thank you for being so highly of this community to even think of applying for this amazing opportunity. So thank you for all that you do for the city of Aniston. I wish I was a runner. I would probably, but it's okay. Thank you for all that you do.
Yeah, Coach, thank you, Maggie. Thank you, Mr. Great recognition for the city. Thanks for your hard work in putting all this together. And it's just evidence that a lot of great things going on in Aniston, and many reasons for people to be in Aniston and come to Aniston. Thank you for it. Let's take a picture. You go ahead and take yours first.
Ready? One, two, three.
All right, can I get mine? Everybody look right here. One, two, three. All right. Thank you. Thanks, Coach.
Counselor for Jenkins?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
Counselor for Smith?
Yes.
Counselor for Harris?
Yes.
Mayor Draper?
Yes, the consent agenda passes. The first ordinance tonight, we've got two, both of them relatively short, so I'll go ahead and read those. They are both on their first reading. The first ordinance to be presented tonight is one amending section twelve point fifty-two A of the Code Ordinances Governing Household Refuge Collection Service Fee. The ordinance reads, "Now therefore be ordained by the council of the city of Aniston, Alabama, as follows: Section one, Chapter twelve, Article three, Section twelve point five-two, subsection A of the Code of the City of Aniston, Alabama, nineteen eighty-one, is hereby amended, restated, and enacted in its entirety as follows: Section twelve point five-two, collection fee and due dates. Subpart A, the fee charged for curbside collection service for each residential unit shall be the amount set forth in the annual fee schedule adopted by resolution of the council. Section two, this ordinance shall become effective immediately upon its adoption and publication one time in Aniston Star, a newspaper of general circulation published in the city of Aniston, Alabama. The city clerk is hereby ordered and directed to cause a copy of this order to be posted one time and set in the newspaper." While this is on its first reading, this is a housekeeping matter. I know this was previously discussed. Is there a motion for unanimous consent, which we think that we can take this up this evening?
Summoned.
Is there a second?
Second.
Will the clerk please call the roll to issue unanimous consent?
Counselor member Jenkins?
Yes.
Counselor for Roberts?
Yes.
Counselor for Smith?
Yes.
Counselor for Harris?
Yes.
Mayor Draper?
Uh, yes, unanimous consent, having been approved, I will move for passage and adoption, is there a second?
Second.
Counsel discussion. Hearing the other clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor for Jenkins?
Yes.
Counselor for Roberts?
Yes.
Counselor for Smith?
Yes.
Counselor for Harris?
Yes.
Mayor Draper?
Yes, the ordinance passes. Our second ordinance, also on its first reading, is relatively short, and I will read it as well. It is an ordinance amending section six point two-three of the Code Ordinances Governing Members of the Technical Code of Board Adjustments and Appeals. The ordinance reads, "Now therefore be ordained by the council of the city of Aniston, Alabama, as follows: Section one, Chapter six, Article two, Section six point two point three of the Code of the City of Aniston, Alabama, nineteen eighty-one, is hereby amended, restated, and enacted in its entirety as follows: Section six point two point three, members and term limits. Members of the board shall have the following term limits. Board members shall serve initially for the following terms: two for a five-year term, two for a four-year term, one for a three-year term, one for a two-year term, and one for a one-year term. Thereafter, each member of the board shall serve a five-year term running from the expiration of the initial term. The board members shall continue to serve after the expiration of the members' term until either the member is reappointed or a successor is appointed for the remainder of the five-year term. The chief building official of the city shall serve as next official member of the board and shall provide technical assistance to the board, which shall not have a vote in matters presented before the board. In addition to the seven regular members, the city manager shall appoint two supernumerary members who shall serve in the board and be called the chairman. Only in the absence or recusal of regular members. The supernumerary members shall possess a business license and actively practice within the city one or two, one or more of the traits specified in section six point two point two. Each supernumerary member shall serve a two-year term or until a successor is appointed. Section two, the ordinance shall become effective immediately upon its adoption and publication one time in Aniston Star, a newspaper of general circulation published in the city of Aniston, Alabama. The city clerk is hereby ordered and directed to cause a copy of this order to be published one time and set in the newspaper." Yeah, I believe this was discussed in the work session, kind of a housekeeping matter. Is there a motion for unanimous consent?
Summoned.
Is there a second?
Second.
Will the clerk please call the roll on the issue of unanimous consent?
Counselor for Jenkins?
Yes.
Counselor for Roberts?
Yes.
Counselor for Smith?
Yes.
Counselor for Harris?
Yes.
Mayor Draper?
Yes, unanimous consent, having been granted, I will move for passage and adoption, is there a second?
Second.
Counsel discussion. Hearing the other clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor for Jenkins?
Yes.
Counselor for Roberts?
Yes.
Counselor for Smith?
Yes.
Counselor for Harris?
Yes.
Mayor Draper?
Yes, the ordinance is adopted. Our last voting matter tonight is one that was added from the work session, and it is a resolution endorsing RNC's letter of intent with UAB. I will move for passage and adoption, is there a second?
Second.
Counsel discussion. Hearing the other clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor for Jenkins?
Yes.
Counselor for Roberts?
Yes.
Counselor for Smith?
Yes.
Counselor for Harris?
Yes.
Mayor Draper?
Yes, the resolution is adopted. That concludes our voting matter, this is without a hand opening for the closing.
Good, thank you, Mayor. Mr. Fox, are there any other matters that this is on the court of counsel?
Move right here.
All right, we do have more public comments that are scheduled tonight. If you want to call your name, if you will come forward, please state your name and address. And in accordance with our rules, please limit your comments to three minutes. First is Mr. By Turner, Judge By Turner.
Thank you, Counselor.
You're welcome.
Counselor Long gets his decision. And the rest of you, thanks, appreciate it. I'm thrilled to be here for just a few minutes. I see you. Set timer. Five, fifty. Three minutes.
We also, we also have a time, sir.
I got it. Wait, 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 I'll make sure to remind you. So this, 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 this evolved, just briefly, you have a blocking initiative started a few months ago, I think, or last year. And we lost a little parking place over there near the courthouse. By the way, I know everybody at your person, except for you, I want to tell you, you're a native of the coaches at our school, and I appreciate you, and you're a great fellow, so you're actually a councilman, so you're in good shape, so. But in response to that, just to sort of identify why I'm here instead of our county administrator, Mark Tyler, you know, he does a billion and a grand stuff, and I kind of have to deal with people in the courthouse. So that means that I get the noise, you know, if there are things happening as far as parking is concerned. So I met with some of the folks here at the courthouse. What I did was I, and I went and talked to Steve about it. He was explaining to me how the parking situations are evolving concerning the courthouse and the city's decisions about what to do about the parking regarding the courthouse. And so, and I, and he suggested, I thought it was a good idea, maybe I should, you know, gather up some numbers that maybe y'all would have a chance to look at, to kind of enlighten exactly what's going on with the parking decisions regarding the courthouse. So I met with Steve, and I ran across the street and I talked to the federal courthouse, federal judge. A little bit surprised to find that he has a fifty million dollar building, and he has these street people parking out on the curb. You know, I thought I was a little bit goofed up, you know, but, so he had some concern about it. So he gave me a report of what they do in terms of visitation and people participating in the federal courthouse. I went across the street to community corrections, and they told me about all the visitors who come to see them. You know, state parks are pro-probationer, drug testing people, and all the things, coming and out of their car. They've got like a twenty park, parking area that they don't usually park on themselves as employees because their car might get skinned up, you know, with the people that come in and go in out of their offices. So remember them, and then I talked to, again, Steve, I talked to Kim in Carson, to give me a little survey on all the people coming in and out of the courthouse. And then I had every judge kind of give me an agenda. And I've got a master calendar. So what I did was I got these compilations, I'm going to give each to you. I didn't want to get into it as kind of a jury trial, you give me the exhibit too early, and then stand there looking at the exhibit, and then I listen into the testimony. So I just say this, and I tell when I get through talking. And then as you look at it over the next several days, or whatever, you get a chance to look at it, you may have questions, if I didn't call them. So that way you don't get all this trouble with that, and then, you know, well, you missed something, you know, or what's this mean? So, but you, you will see, I think, by the really humble little numbers, like, for instance, just, just, I, I symbolic this. I had nine jury trials last year, three were involved in capital murder cases. One was out of town in Auburn, I got, they got moved over there because of the, maybe the defense. Didn't take long with that big of a story.
Thank you, Mr. Turner.
Yeah, but here they are. So I'm going to give it to you, look at them, give me a buzz, oh, hey, thank you. Not the rest of you. But thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Turner.
Thank you, Lord.
Will you? Thank you. Uh, next, we will have Mr. Blenray.
We had a thirty-five, fourteen, they're a lot of those, and the jurors say, see, I want to talk about it. I would, but I do want to say, you know, we have a lot of things that happen going on in the city. And we ask a lot of our police department and other places that I want to thank the chief there for, for all of you. And, and, you know, but at the same time, there come times when we got to have officers that do what's right, you know, because we've been a lot of, you know, they, they, they go a long way, they wait because, they go a long way. So we got to help tons worth of people. And so that's the things that don't be happening on down there, I don't go into it. But we, we have to help people to do what's right because we have, and infect our people long run. And so with that, I want to say once again, thank the chief for all you do and everything. If there's anything that we can do to help people in the community, let us know. And then with the end, we don't have any other questions.
Thank you, Mr. Ray. Uh, next, we will have Ms. Shawana Hill, is she here? I don't see her, okay. Lastly, we'll have Mr. Richard Jackson.
Richard Jackson, twenty-three, seventeen, Old Street. Miss Neil's not here, but she did have some concerns. She had an unforeseen circumstance came up this evening, so she thought she may be able to make. Miss Neil has been having a recurring situation that her house, when it rains, more than a sixteen-ounce bottle of water, that she has flooding in her house. She has a neighbor around the corner that had the same circumstance, that had to get served, probably come in and insurance to take care of that. But I took pictures of the house the other day, one day last week, raining, and it is pretty bad. I, I think that maybe we should go up there and get some engineers or something up there to see if, if there has to be some rerouting, rerouting of sewer lines or whatever the situation is that's causing water that's up, coming up in her yard and come over a wall and flood in her basement. But that's what her concern was. I have a concern, we have what we call the Downtown Development Authority reimbursement program. And as far as downtown historic district in the West Fifteenth Street Historic District, I think I might have mentioned it to Mr. Roberts several months ago, but the land for the district, the boundaries, I think, need to be expanded. I know my church is over on Eighteenth Street, West Eighteenth Street, right across the street from the Calhoun County Commission Building. And we had a problem with the last reimbursement program that we had signed up for the reimbursement, and we were kind of told that we qualified. But then you came to find out, come to find out, we were outside of the jurisdiction for that, for that claim that we turned in. And I think that it's not enough of West Aniston going north, maybe even going south, to be included in the West Fifteenth Street District. I think it needs to be expanded at least a couple of blocks north and south. And it would cover some things that, cover some people that may need some help. And, and, you know, I feel like anything west of Noble Street and north of Tenth Street should be included in that. But that's up to you guys to look at that and see if you can do something about it. But one other thing, we have in the NAACP is sponsoring a Black History Program, a talent show dance at the Calhoun Community Center, Saturday is February twenty-fifth from six to nine P.M. Anyone from seventeen and under is eligible to participate in the talent show. And we have Ms. Hill at two-five-six-four-five-four-eight-nine-eight-six, and Ms. Nikita Foster, two-five-six-seven-seven-zero-six-six-one-seven, who are taking the registration for the talent show. You know, we'll be door prizes and everything, and this is the first of many. We hope we will be, have this annually. And this, Black History has been under attack by some people like Ron DeSantis and other religious state governors and councilors.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson.
I'm taking, Mr. Can, I take Miss Miss Neil.
Cannot. All right, sorry. We'll talk soon. Uh, let's now move on to council comments. Counselor Jenkins, we'll start with you.
Uh, I've got nothing to say for tonight.
All right, Counselor Roberts?
First of all, thank everybody for coming out. It's always a pleasure seeing you come out, take your time to come to the council meeting that shows us that you do care as well. Let's just pray for our city, a lot of things going on. A lot of rumblings about this, that, the things that we can't really, a lot of things we can't control, but let's pray for the things we can't control. You know, it seems like in certain areas, violence is picking up. But, you know, we have a problem with children with guns. And it's, it's not just in Aniston, it's all over the United States. But soon as, if I, if I ask the chief to, hey, you see a group of young guys standing around looking crazy, looking like they about to do something, you know, go check them out, see what they got, make sure they got no guns. Soon as I do that, they're a profiler. But we're having so many, so many, what I feel is unnecessary gun violence. So there's still, we need to be in prayer, not only for our school, but be in prayer for, I mean, not only for our city, all of our schools, they just had a shooting up in, what we're just going to say, they had a shooting up there. And I mean, some of the things that happened, it just, it's definitely, it could be us later. Well, God bless y'all, thank y'all for coming. Let's just keep moving the city forward. Appreciate it, and thank you, change.
Thank you, Counselor Harris.
Speaking of moving the city forward, it could easily get lost in the shuffle of everything that we're doing. It's just incredible. Today, in our work session, we heard about tons of park projects, street projects, help for the homeless, arts entertainment district, a board of adjustments for appeals for people who disagree with a code enforcement decision, which I think is a great, a great system of checks and balances, the trailhead for Callwater, hiring an airport manager, the huge, the RNC-UAB connection, and the opioid lawsuit. So there are a lot of, lot of issues and positive things that are going on in Aniston. And it was, it's easy sometimes to forget about all the great things. And I'm just saying, just, just to remind you of what's really going on, just tonight, so, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Member Harris. I do want to thank you all for coming out on tonight. Judge Turner, I will be going over all of this that you have given us. And I know that that is something that we are taking very seriously because a lot of our complaints has come from the parking concerns, you know, moving forward, moving forward with a lot of the capital projects we'll have in the future. So I know that's something that we will heavily consider. Mr. Jackson, I do believe I connected Ms. Shawana with, I can't even think of his name right now, over at the Aniston Water Works. And they did have a conversation about the flooding in that area. I don't know if the issue is on city property or if it's on her property, but I'll follow up with them just to see, you know, where we got with that. I think that is pretty much it that I have to say today, other than I hope you all have a wonderful and safe evening. There being no further business, I move for a There being no further business, I move for a motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
Will the clerk please call roll?
Councilmember Jenkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Roberts?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Harry?
Yes.
Meeting is adjourned.